Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 22 Pangton County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on July 7, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. So there are agendas for today's meeting in the back of the room, in the bookcase. And if you are an applicant or an agent of the applicant, we don't require the speaker request forms, but if there are items that you wish to speak on today and you're not one of those folks, we would ask that you fill one of those speaker request forms out. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with roll call.
Rich?
Aye.
Sunny?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Just note that Mark is out, but he may be stepping in here as we get going. First item on today's agenda is approval of the June 8, 2020 minutes. Did anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Welcome, Mark. Any changes or corrections to the meeting minutes? Seeing nothing here on the dais, Jim or Kathy, any changes to the minutes?
No, nothing.
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on today's agenda is approval of the agenda. The consent calendar today consists of items three through eight, followed by agenda items nine through 12, and then 13 through 17 are our normal county board report, items from the public, items from the staff, items from membership and adjournment. Any changes to today's agenda? Seeing none here on the dais, Kathy or Jim?
No.
Nothing.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commissioner, planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1729 for Arch Duran to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters on the subject property for seasonal use from May 1st to October 1st in a general agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1729 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1808 for Stromer Properties LLC, Brooks Stromer, to review an illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit in a general commercial district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1808 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1920 for Cody Russ Butler. Jeanne Marr is the agent to review an existing residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 1920 to the July 13, 2020 Planning Commission meeting with one condition. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU 1930 for Harry and Gail McCain to review allowing an existing residence, a Morton Building, to remain as a guest house once the new single-family residence is complete in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1930 with conditions. Item number seven is Minor Platt MPL 20-10 for Robert Schreivers to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot D1 and Lot 1A of the Log Port subdivision. Staff recommends approval of Minor Platt MPL 20-10 with conditions. And lastly, item eight is Minor Platt MPL 20-10 for Rushler's Ranch LLC. Davis Engineering is the agent to create tract A of Rushler's Ranch addition. Staff is recommending approval of Minor Platt MPL 20-11 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items staff wishes to pull?
Nothing.
Are there any items the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none here in the room, Kathy or Jim, any items to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. For those folks in the audience, items three, four, three through eight essentially are on the consent agenda, and that means that we will vote on all of those items at the same time. Are, does anyone have any of those items that they would wish to pull from the consent agenda for separate consideration? I have one speaker request form up here, but it's if it's removed from the consent agenda, is that correct? Okay. And then, ma'am, the, I believe that the item you're here to talk about is item 11, is that correct, on the agenda? It says Reno Gulch. That's the one you'd like to, I believe, I'm sorry, that's item number 10. So that's not included in the consent agenda. Okay. It appears that there's no items to pull from today's consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Consent agenda carries. Brings us to item number nine.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christina Proetti, County Planner. Item number nine is vacation easement request 20-01. A little history real quick before I get into it. On April 8, 2020, the applicants had requested a variance to reduce the side yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet and to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet, and also to allow an accessory structure, which would be a shop, to be placed in the front yard. So during staff's research and from departmental routing comments received for that variance request, it was discovered that there is an eight-foot utility and drainage easement in their front yard. So staff informed the Troxels of that. The Troxels have decided to vacate that easement, which is what we're here for today. So on March 1, 2020, the applicants did apply for the vacation easement 20-01, and the request is as follows, to vacate the existing eight-foot wide, it's along the front edge there, utility and drainage easement on the front of all lot lines of the Mission Hills subdivision number two for their lot. Staff has routed this and no comments have come back. I believe the utility company is in favor of it also. I have their comments in the staff report if needed. And no other comments. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
And the applicants are in the audience if you need to.
Yeah, just one question. Why isn't this on the consent agenda? Why is this on the separate?
That I honestly don't know.
I'm just always curious as to how
I don't know the answer.
some things.
Good morning again, Brittany Molitor. If the item is something that's new that the Planning Commission hasn't heard before, typically Minor Platts will be on there because you have heard the layout plats. Layout plats are on the regular agenda or conditional permit reviews unless we have issues with them, they're on consent.
Okay. Thank you. Just curious. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Sunny.
I see from the request for comment, the Highway Department had a comment in opposition. Can you elaborate on that?
Oh, Highway, let's see what they said. They didn't like the exhibit turned in from FISC. They said it wasn't efficient enough. They wanted exact numbers. The exhibit, if you look page four or five, the front edge says, it doesn't show where the proposed structure is going to be placed on there, so they didn't like that.
Cool. So they said oppose, but I guess if they have the information they need by now, maybe they're not in opposition after all.
From what I got is they didn't like how the exhibit was laid out, and they oppose all vacation easements from what I am familiar with.
Okay, Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
That would have been the only question I had, was how far that building is actually going to
Yeah, unfortunately.
...lay into that easement.
FISC didn't put the structure on their exhibit, so.
I might request a continuance until we get the information as to where they're going to place the building. I would move for a continuance.
Motion to continue?
Well, we get, I guess the applicants are here. The applicants are here, they can tell us.
Okay. So you withdraw your motion and tell Lee?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. We'll have the applicants come up if there's some questions. Go ahead and state your name, sir, for the record.
Good morning. I'm Tom Troxel, and we're the owners of this property. My wife is here with me.
Okay. Can you go ahead and elaborate then on where the, how close to the right-of-way the structure will be?
If you see the stack of firewood, that's approximately where the wood shop would be. I approximated in my original application where it would be. It's not on the exhibit, if I'm understanding correctly. But it will come partway into the utility easement, yes.
How far? A foot?
No, probably most of, because the original survey for the cul-de-sac that we're on, where you see the grass right here in front, the cul-de-sac, what's actually surveyed for the cul-de-sac goes 25 feet back from that. And so there's a lot of what we thought was our property is actually in the cul-de-sac. So we are proposing to take most of that eight-foot utility and drainage easement and have our wood shop located there.
That easement goes east and west towards Rapid Creek, right? Is Rapid Creek
No, it goes more north and south on that portion of it.
Okay.
Okay, I thought so. All right. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Actually, on the ground, it looks pretty logical. It was almost surprised that we had this easement there.
My question for you, sir, is I get nervous when we're going to vacate the entire easement. I do see that the eight-foot side yard easement is still there, so it provides an avenue or a corridor, if you will, for future utilities to other areas and some of those things. So you're not cutting that entirely off. But by your comments in listing this, my question to you is, will you have a survey or come out and stake the corner of your building to confirm that it's not in the right-of-way? Because if we vacate this entire easement, which I don't have a problem with doing, my next concern is that you get the corner of your building wrong and it ends up in the right-of-way or the right-of-way access of the cul-de-sac itself. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but there's a pen within a few feet of where the wood shop would be, and so it's, I'm pretty confident we will not go into the right-of-way for the cul-de-sac.
Okay. And that means no foundations of the building, the eve of the building coming over?
No.
And some of those, I mean, so those are items that I would be concerned with, I guess if we're going to vacate the entire thing.
And we'd be happy to agree to those as conditions.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Sunny.
Do you believe your building is going to be zero feet, like literally right up to the right-of-way? And if so, is there a reason why you need to be so close? Is there really a space constraint?
Yes, because behind what you see there is the wood pile is our drain field, and so we can't really go further back.
Oh, so you're stuck between the right-of-way and the drain field.
I actually did go to a site visit to verify that. So they have drain field, and then their backyard is just cliff.
Okay. And so, but, so you're going to need to be zero feet. You're going to be right up to the right-of-way?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
And the other thing is, you know, we've got the nice big trees there, and we don't want to cut the trees to the side, and, you know, that's part of the atmosphere of that whole area is the nice trees.
Well, because you're in a cul-de-sac, I think it's probably not going to be a problem, but I just wanted to have the clarification.
Sure. And just behind the wood pile and the drain field is a cliff, so there's nobody behind us. That's the cliff, and then Rapid Creek is right below that. So there's, there's not going to be any access needed to anybody behind us.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, hearing none, recommend, staff recommends approval of vacation easement v. 20-01 with conditions. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sunny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to item 10, conditional use permit 20-10.
Good morning, Christina Proetti again. Conditional use permit, it's not a review, that word should be taken out of there, sorry, 20-10 for Jennifer Borger, and it's a vacation home rental. All right. So, if I can get to my right page here, sorry. This is to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. The applicant, Jennifer Borger, has requested a conditional use permit to allow an existing three-bedroom, single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental. There are two holding tanks on the subject property, one gray, one black. The applicant will need to provide pump receipts, which she has since this staff report has been written. I've received a couple of pump receipts. And a service contract will need to be put in place with a certified wastewater pumper prior to the operation. Mrs. Borger emailed me over the weekend, and she has that started as well with Hill Septic. The applicant has complied with all of the application similar requirements for a vacation home rental as listed in Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, Section 319, including the following: Complete application and floor plans, approval from SDENR received April 17, 2020. 2020 South Dakota Department of Health lodging license and local contact, which will be Jennifer Borger. SDENR approved the VHR for a memorandum over the occupancy of six persons. Since this has been made public, staff has received two complaints from neighbors regarding the use of this as a vacation home rental. And with that, there are no other concerns for this property. Staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Could you list what the, or short synopsis of what the complaints were?
Will you repeat?
The complaints, what, were they noise complaints? Were they garbage complaints? Were they?
They're both kind of along the same lines that there are neighbors who, one of the complaints is in what the staff report, the other one I received this morning, emails stating neighborhood, they don't want miscellaneous people in there.
So this was, so this was the, yeah, okay, so I read, I read through that. This is in response to the application, though, and these aren't, these weren't separate complaints that have come in ahead of the application or anything like
Right. This is just not wanting a VHR.
Okay.
Putting place there.
Thank you. Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Approximately how far in is this off of 385 going in Reno Gulch Road?
Oh, it's, it's pretty far back there. I did my site visit. I don't know how many miles exactly. Okay. The gallon audience says eight tenths of a mile.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get, we'll, we'll have you come up and speak, ma'am. I do have your speaker request form. We'll finish the questions with staff, and then we'll go.
Okay. I think I'm familiar with it.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none and hearing none, we will move to the speakers on this item. We, I believe that we have the applicant on the line to answer questions on an audio call, and we have one speaker request form for Madeline Hanson. If you would please come up. Then please state your name.
Madeline Hanson.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I'm from actually 12221 Reno Gulch Road, and I believe, when you say limited agriculture, is it residential with limited agriculture? Yeah, when that, I know down at my house, which is a mile and six tenths up Reno Gulch Road, it's residential. So I'm assuming that when you say limited agriculture, I think we're residential with limited agriculture.
Well, I think it's just the zoning classification for the property. You can have, you can have residential properties in like limited agriculture.
Right. And I think that's what I am too at 12221.
Okay. And I don't know that to be true or false.
I must be, because my, my next neighbor further up has a couple of yearlings and a couple of horses and a few goats, so I'm pretty sure it is limited agriculture.
Okay.
But I know, I've lived there for 14 years now, full-time, and before that for like about 20 years, part-time. And the way it is with the rule that you can only rent out like a month at a time, you rent out by at least a month, and you can have a lease if you're not going to be at your house and you want to rent it out.
I guess I'm not familiar with
I believe that's how it is now, and that has worked in the past really well for my next-door neighbor and my across-the-street neighbor, who both have houses that they have rented out, but they don't rent it out on a weekend basis, and
Can I ask, do you have, do you have covenants for the area that govern?
We have not gone to that point. It's sort of an understood type thing.
Understood.
Because people were trying to rent out the house right next door to me, and over a three-year period, he slipped the pen, and he, he very politely said to me, Maddie, if you, if these people are bothering, you just tell me right away. It was someone who owned a campground in Hill City, and he had run over from that, and he used to live in the house next door to me. So he said that.
Okay.
Well, so over a period of three years, every summer, I got to find out what it's like to have a bed and breakfast next door to me. And it sort of got progressively worse and worse, to the point of there were people partying till 1:00 a.m. At 11:00 p.m., I said, well, now I can open my windows and get some cool air. No, woke up at 1:00, no, still couldn't. And quite often, the beer cans were around everywhere, and they didn't come in and do the garbage in a, in a quick enough manner. But, so that, that guy sold to someone else, and now I've got a person who actually comes and uses it. He and his family use the house and his friends, but, you know, they don't just rent it out. Because in my experience renting it out, you, well, you kind of destroy the neighborhood aspect of Reno Gulch. We're pretty close net up there, and we know who belongs and who doesn't. And you get these people coming in and out, in and out, and you cannot exactly tell who people are. So I've had two incidents of people actually trespassing on my property, thinking that they were just tourists and they had a right to be there, and it looked like natural forest to them, probably. That was one, one family. And the other family was during, well, it wasn't exactly a family, it was during the time, winter 2019 into, well, a year ago, a year ago January, we had the incident of several houses in the Custer area and Hill City area and all around being burglarized by gangs that went in and wanted to steal guns. And so I had heard that rumor, and then one Sunday, I'd been out for a three-hour hike, and I came back, and I was just getting ready to sit down with a cup of tea in my bedroom and watch a DVD, and I heard rustling on my deck, and I ignored it for the first two, three minutes, but then rustling, and I'm going to go, I'm going to see if those pesky squirrels are on my deck again, what this is. So I got up to my kitchen door and opened it just in time to see two guys with bandanas on. They had just slid through my screen door, they were getting ready to unlock my door. And I got to see what those two of the break-in people looked like. And that week, I had a little chat with the lieutenant who was covering the case, and I believe it was two or three different groups were burglarizing places up in the neighborhood. And later, that same week, about 10 days after that incident, my next-door neighbor, who's only there about half the year, my other neighbor stopped by and said, hey, why is Paul's sauna door open and the light on in there, and the wind's blowing it up? Well, we went up and investigated, someone had broken into his house, and that is one of two break-ins that he had that winter. So it's much more practical, if it's going to be residential, to limit as much as possible the bed and breakfast in and out, in and out people, because it just doesn't seem to be working really well. Our neighborhood is very, we take care of each other, and we watch out for each other's houses, and we also can be of great help to each other when any of us have any problems. And we kind of, to say that there are only two complaints, one of those complaints is Tom Thorson, and he included Cindy and Todd's complaint in with his letter. I suggested to him that he have them write a separate letter. And I think the other one you have is probably Rob Simon.
Simon.
Yeah. So that's really four different people that are complaining, plus me and my neighbor, Steve Phelps at number 1225. He asked me to kind of ditto what I say, because he actually watched those two young men go by his house and wondered who they were, and then he saw them running away after they confronted me, and it was a very unpleasant confrontation, because you open the door and there's two 20-something young men there, and I just said, you know, why are you doing this? And he said, I'm finished with life. And I go, wait, there's a lot of love out there, you can get help. And I just looked him in the eyes and I talked him down, but I could have gotten in a little bit of trouble there. And if I hadn't gone to the door right then, he would have come in my house, and who knows what would have happened then? So that's just so that you guys know what it's like up there. And, I mean, we're not being nasty when we don't want people just buying those houses for vacation rentals, but it seems to be working out a lot better if you have people that are going to be there all year round. And I know for a fact that there are people who want to rent houses on a long And I know for a fact that there are people who want to rent houses on a longer. So if, if the people that are doing the bed and breakfasts want to rent it out, just call me because I know people who want to spend money on renting a house full-time. And that seems to work better in this neighborhood. That's about all I had to say unless.
Okay, we'll see if there's any questions.
Yeah, the trespassing issue and the, because you don't know where the lines are between the yards up there. And innocently I can see that people would just be wandering around, but it hasn't been, um, pleasant for me. The other time when people were wandering around, they were climbing the cliff across from my house. The little kid was and the mother was watching and I went out and said, um, that's not national forest land. That's my land. And I didn't want her falling on that cliff. And I didn't want her knocking rocks down from it either. So, um, that's just pretty much how the limited agriculture and residential has worked out pretty well without having it rezoned as areas where you can have bed and breakfasts, you know, more and more and more of them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, if you want to hold tight, um, we may have some questions for you. Are there, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, I understand your concerns on this and, uh, I've got friends that live.
Oh.
I've got friends that live up off of Reno Gulf Road as well, further up, um, by Madison Mountain where it intersects, but.
That's quite a ways up.
Yeah, quite a ways up. But, uh, you know, your, your concerns are legitimate. However, when those, when those break-ins and stuff were happening, I don't think any of those were ever linked to, um, a vacation home rental or.
Um, the second one in my friend Paul Marcusson's house, I can give you his phone numbers and you can get more details about that.
Okay, but you, you actually think they were linked to somebody that was staying up there at a vacation home rental?
No, not, you know, Paul would know that more.
Right.
And the guys, I didn't get with the lieutenant to see if it was the same guys that were trying to do my house.
Yeah.
But, um, my point was that, oh, and that very same house, the one, um, that we're considering in item number ten today, in, uh, the early, like about twenty-ten or so. I think it, or probably, well, when the Johnston's owned that house, they kind of built that house. They had some guys, local guys in doing work for them. And then about, then a month or two later, they had a extreme break-in where many pieces of their very expensive art were stolen and it was by the same guy who had just done the work for them. And then, um, he got arrested. So you could, um, you know, consider that as being a point towards not just good having people in and out, in and out, in and out, even though it wasn't a renter. And I don't know, you know, uh, Paul and I thought that one possibility was this guy that long-term rented his place for three months and then he had to kick him out. But, um, we don't know who did. I mean, I actually was checking his house and I discovered the vandalism. They took a beautiful, um, mounted buffalo head. Or was it an elk? It was an elk head. And threw it in his stream. And we couldn't figure out why, probably because it wouldn't fit in their small car and they wanted to get out of there. And I had to discover that and phone Paul. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Further questions? Jim, Kathy? Okay.
No questions.
Okay.
No, no questions.
Thank you.
Asking them to, um, not, more? Kind of. One in, or this one in particular?
I think Jim's not muted.
Jim, are you not muted?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We, I don't think we have any further questions for you, ma'am. Thank you very much. We do, it's my understanding, have the applicant, um, on an audio call. Are there questions for the applicant? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
This is, uh, Commissioner DeSanto. I just wanted to confirm that you actually do live in Rapid City, um, and would be able to go up and inspect the premises on occasion.
Yes, Mark, I do live in Rapid City. Um, and we also use this property, um, for our own vacation purposes and I'm up there frequently, um, to inspect it and plan to be available and attentive to any potential renters.
And would you be opposed to sharing your contact information with the neighbors so that if they had problems, they could get ahold of you?
Um, no, I'm not opposed to that at all. I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have no questions for the applicant. I do have comments in general, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. In this document, it indicates considerations for conditional use permit request. And number one, the effect upon use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the use is already permitted. I think it's clear from the letters that we have received and the lady who just spoke that the neighbors view this as, uh, having an effect on the use and enjoyment of their property. So clearly, you know, number one, that does not apply by virtue of the fact that the people feel it will impede their use and enjoyment of the property. And I think that ought to be taken into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
I'll make some further comments, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Sonny.
Just in general, just to start, I, I'm not a big fan of vacation home rentals. We see them all the time and the neighbors always, almost always have very similar comments to what you made earlier. This is going to be reviewed in three months and it will continue to be reviewed thereafter on a complaint basis or as directed by the planning commission. And that's an important time for you to be able to express if there actually are any issues. So we all hear these comments and, and we feel for them, but we also don't see very many, um, complaints for the many vacation home rentals that there are. And we can't really preemptively assume the worst. So if this passes, if this conditional, uh, use permit is, is approved, I would just advise that you can use the resources of the county to make any complaints if there are any issues. And as it gets reviewed in the future, you can address those at that time.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd also like to echo, uh, Sonny's sentiment on that. I kind of agree. I'm not necessarily for or against V H Rs. I've actually, I believe in private property rights, but I've voted for some V H Rs and I've voted against some V H Rs. I think they're all fact-dependent on what's going on. Um, speaking to the, uh, use and enjoyment of the other property, I, I know the, the, um, the individuals that already live in that community think that it may impact. We don't, we haven't seen an impact because we don't have one there. These might, this V H R might, um, come online and you may not ever know, um, what's going on. I mean, sure, you're going to know who's in your neighborhood, but you may not have any negative impact from that. And I would say, I would echo that use the, the tools given to you that if it does impact you, then it can come back before us in about three months and we can review that to see if it has negatively impacted your community and actually has, um, as the wording here says, um, affected your enjoyment of, of your property in that area. But it may not. And we're, we're, we're jumping the gun and making an assumption if we deny it before we even have any facts or data on the situation.
Go ahead, you can come up and answer, answer the question.
What I wanted to say is that, um, I think that it's very important that, I believe her name is Jen, the person getting.
Yes.
That she is going to be coming up and checking it and in contact with us and looking out for it. Because that makes all the difference in the world, how much she is involved. And it could even be a plus for the neighborhood because she has two holding tanks. And she has to make sure that those are pumped properly and not just sucked out and spread on the forest or other things. That's, um, you know, up in our neighborhood, uh, she could be a plus, like advocating for doing it the correct way and not the incorrect way and paying attention and actually adding something to the neighborhood. But if she chooses to rent to people that are, um, you, you know, has some bad luck with her renters and gets some, uh, some ones that are not nice people. And if that starts overweighting the ones that are, uh, indeed very nice people and that wouldn't, you know, trash the neighborhood, which so far it's been about seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five percent to twenty-five percent addicts. But if she can get that to be the positive, really good, you know, ones that respect things and, um, like that, it could be a good thing. So like you say, in three months, we'll just tune in again. And I'm assuming that then as time goes by, you know, it's not going to just be, okay, now we're going to open the whole area up to everybody gets approved for this, approved, because, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a new thing that we're doing here. We haven't had these bed and breakfasts for that long that are the Airbnb. And, uh, I know my across-the-street neighbor Fred Marcus, Markman, Fred Mackaman, he would probably say the same thing he said on the last one, which was it could, it could work, but we have to have some kind of organizational stuff set up, which is like you guys' job to know and to follow up and to be really, um, attentive to these complaints. Cause he, he, I think has put in complaints before or felt like it. And we're, we're not guaranteed that somebody's listening to them. In this case, we're lucky because we have Jen and she's in, you know, even though it's thirty miles away, still it's, it's, um, you know, within reason. But it's an important thing because otherwise we're going to not have our, our main attraction that brings people here, which is our, our good quality of life in South Dakota.
Thank you for your comments. Further questions, comments on this item? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, hearing none. Recommendation from staff is for approval of conditional use permit, C U twenty-dash-ten with seventeen conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, on a roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
No.
Motion carries. Brings us to item eleven.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thedison County Planner. Agenda item eleven is conditional use permit twenty-dash-eleven. The applicant is Audra Olson. She has requested to allow an existing three-bedroom residence to be utilized as a vacation home rental on the subject property. The zoning ordinance lists five factors that the planning commission may consider in review of conditional use permit applications. There as follows. I have them up on the screen for you. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. The proposed use for the single-family residence as a vacation home rental should not affect the use of enjoyment, use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the use is already permitted and upon the permitted values in the surrounding properties. Number two, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, the use should not affect normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Number three, the proposed use of the existing single-family residence should not require any utilities or facilities that are not already in place. Accesses to be provided off of Sunnyside Gulch Road. Additionally, staff has no drainage concerns related specifically to the applicant's request at this time. Number four, Pennington County zoning ordinance requires one off-street parking space per bedroom. Three parking spaces are required for conditional use permit twenty-dash-eleven, and it appears that adequate park, parking is provided on the subject property. And lastly, number five, the proposed conditional use should not present odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, or intrusive lighting. The applicant should take care so the proposed uses, so the proposed use does not create the above-listed elements in any amount that would constitute a nuisance. Existing conditions as a property sits today, it's zone suburban residential district. It is one point zero nine acres. There's no special flood hazard on the property. There's a single-family residence and an eight-by-ten shed along with an onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review and no objections were noted. Uh, as I said before, the Pennington County zoning ordinance lists vacation home rental as a conditional use in a suburban residential district as long as the subject property is a minimum of one acre and this property does meet that requirement. Staff also noted that the applicant has complied with all of the application and submittal requirements for a V H R and as listed in the zoning ordinance, and we have received no comments or complaints during the review process. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-dash-eleven with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sonny.
On our last item, it was for review in three months. This one's for review in a year. What makes the difference?
Uh, I think just due to the, to the fact that they received complaints on that one, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Were any complaint letters received?
No, no complaints.
I'm assuming they were sent out.
It was sent out. Yes, we did confirm that the mailings were sent out and we received no complaints.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like there is an Aaron Olson. That is the local contact for, um, Audra Olson. Do you know, is that, uh, a family member?
It is. It's the applicant's brother, Aaron Olson.
Okay. Any further questions? I believe the applicant is on a Zoom audio call. If there are questions for the applicant. Audio only. Okay, um, I don't have any speaker request forms. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, hearing none. Recommendation, um, from staff is approval of conditional use permit twenty-dash-eleven with conditions. Is there a motion?
I would move for approval. Some discussion in a moment.
I'd second.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion?
So I actually do have a question for, do you have Audra on the phone?
I believe so. Is Audra on the phone? A Zoom call? Audra, can you hear us? This is Rich Marsh from the planning commission. Hello?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Hi, Audra, uh, Mark DeSanto. I am just wondering with the local contact you have here, Aaron, is he a resident of Rapid City, Hill City? Where does he live?
He actually lives right next door to the vacation home, um, in his permanent residence there. So he is right next door on, onsite for any, any problems that would arise.
Okay, and this is your brother?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Audra. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, uh, hearing none, uh, motion and second was for approval. No further discussion. We'll go to roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item twelve.
Good morning Commissioners again. Item twelve is layout plan L P L twenty-dash-twelve to create lots A, B, C, and D of Busmar subdivision. As a property exists today, it consists of one lot that's own low-density residential district. It consists of twelve point eight-three acres. It is vacant of any structures. However, there is an existing onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. At one point, there used to be a single wide mobile home on this property and it was removed. And at that time, the property owner, um, wished to keep the onsite wastewater treatment. on-site wastewater treatment system in place in the event that the property was ever developed. Access is off of Old Hill City Road. Old Hill City Road is maintained by the Pennington County Highway Department, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There was one comment from County Highway that in the event that the lots don't use the designated easements that are on proposed Lot A, that approach permits are obtained from County Highway for those lots. Those proposed lots, the four lots, will consist of approximately three acres. All of them right now are vacant of any structures. There is no special flood hazard area on any of those. Proposed Lot A does contain a forty-foot access easement for access to proposed lots B and D. I'll get that up here for you. And like I said, staff did not find any issues with this property. It was previously rezoned to low-density residential. This, a portion of this property has been previously platted before, so it will have to go through the preliminary and final plat process. So staff is recommending approval with nine conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Hey, Brittany, just curiosity in reading these maps. Sometimes I see this on here and I can't quite understand it, but it shows in Lot C, a creek.
Yes.
Dead ends into Lot D. Does that stream not continue through Lot D? Or, I mean, I've seen this several times and I'm like, where'd the stream go?
There's a big hole there.
Yeah, the, the property owner is in the audience and I do, I'm aware of that one. You can see that drainage from, or that stream from Hill City Road, but I'm not aware if it goes back any farther. The property owner is in the audience. He may be able to speak to it. But I did look, there's no special flood hazard area on it. When they do put the septic in, we still would require that hundred-foot setback to that, even though.
Yeah, I'd like to ask them if that stream continues on to that. Come on.
Sir, if you could state your name for the record.
I'm David Grover and I'm the owner of the property. And yes, it does go through Lot, let's see.
D.
D and on, on down and then just down, oh, to the, not the property that's right next to D, but the following property. The owner of that actually has a really super nice pump down there. Because right at that, where the, where the Lot D, C, and, and, yeah, B, C, and D, I don't know, maybe I need my glasses. But anyway, there is also, it's not only the creek, the creek that runs through there, which runs part-time, not all summer long, but there's a spring there. So there's a constant flow of water that goes down to that, that dam that's down below.
So any idea why it doesn't show that?
I just, when I had the, I, I actually, I had the engineer out there, he's the one that drew this all up for me.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know, actually, honestly, it was too wet. He, when he was down at the lower end of where that, where it shows it stops there, that more because of it's a spring there and, and the water from the creek kind of spreads out more. It's kind of a swampy area. And he was already wet up to his ankles.
Oh, I see.
So he just didn't want to.
Well, maybe that answers my question for me. I thought this was actually one of our maps.
No.
And this is a map drawn, okay, okay, I got you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Further questions for staff or the applicant?
This is Kathy. Just a question for the applicant. You know, I, I live in the neighborhood, so I drive by there regularly. And it seems to me that you've actually done a little construction work to, to channelize that drainage. Is that right?
I have defined where the creek would be, yes.
Yeah. So did you, did you actually reroute it? Or did you just sort of channelize it where it was?
I just channelized it where it was.
Okay, all right. And what was the purpose of that?
Just so it have its own little channel, I guess.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
No.
Okay. Seeing no further questions or comments. Staff recommends approval of layout plat LPL twenty dash twelve with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
For approval.
Oh, second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item thirteen.
Item thirteen is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the June eighth, two thousand twenty planning commission meeting.
Okay. Seeing no items from the public, that brings us to items from the staff, item
So we just have one item on here for planning commission appointments. The Board of Commissioners did reappoint Catherine Johnson to the planning commission. And Charlie Johnson is the new planning commissioner that will be replacing Sonny.
I'm sorry, what?
Charlie Johnson will be replacing Sonny as the planning commissioner, starting in July.
And what is his background?
Charlie was previously on the planning commission. I think he went off in two thousand, it's been three or four years. Yeah, two thousand fourteen or fifteen, I believe, he went off the planning commission. He is a resident of Hill City. He has been pretty active in the community in Hill City. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sonny, on behalf, I guess, of the, of the commission here, we certainly appreciate all the time and effort that you've spent helping improve things here in the, in the county. The staff did get you a, is this a plaque? What is this?
Yeah, you can open it up and.
I don't think that will do the handshake thing with the photo and all that other stuff, but I'll bring this to you.
Do an elbow bump.
Thank you.
You can open it up and take it out if you want, Sonny.
Very nice.
On behalf of staff, we just want to say thank you for serving on the planning commission. The planning commission is important, an important body for our office and, and things. So we thank you for serving.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving on this commission.
Okay. Well, any items from the membership? Seeing none, hearing none. Brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sonny.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks again, Sonny. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your hospitality.